May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of the Virginia Public Schools School Board to order at this time. There's a binder on the table labeled "Public copy for board materials and containing board meeting materials is available for public view." Meeting agendas are available for the public at the table at the side of the room. The public may also access the school board agendas by visiting the district website and clicking on information, District Information, Board of Education Agenda slash Minutes. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to consider additions or deletions from the agenda. Also, I'd like to make a couple of amendments to the agenda this time. On number one, our number six, six point one, deletion. We have no junior student representative tonight. And on seven point one six, that should be point seven, FTE, Physical Education and Health Teacher. Health was deleted, was not put on the agenda. It was put on the form, but there was a mix up. Correct statement? Are there anything else that needs to be? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Alright, number four, recognition of visitors and public comment regarding the meeting agenda. Couple people that are going to be talking tonight, Mr. Principal Kresbuck, Mr. Beal, Mr. Boss. I don't know if Spencer, you have anything to say? Are there any questions about the agenda from any of the people in the crowd? Seeing none, we'll continue. Number five, consider the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented or amended with a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we should go on to number six. No student represented. We have a report from the Parkview Learning Center Principal, Mr. Kresbuck.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to visit. I have six things I'd like to talk about. Most of them are things that we always talk about when I come here. First is our attendance for the year. As you can see from the piece of paper that I acquired from your iPads. Since January first, our enrollment has pretty much stayed the same. We started January first at quarter ninety-four kids, we now have quarter ninety-six kids of our group. And that is K through pre-K, or pre-K through grade two. So our numbers are holding pretty steady. Number two on my list is the kindergarten numbers. Right now for the nineteen-twenty school year, we're sitting at ninety-five kids. We would like to be over a hundred right now, but I don't know if we're going to. Well, we should hit a hundred without any problem. I don't know if we'll get to the hundred-and-twenty mark unless there's something from big influx of kids here in the next three months. I think we'll be at five sections next year instead of six or seven sections. This year, we're at seven sections. I think it's just a little population over the year. Numbers are just down in kindergarten across the area at this point. Hopefully, we can do something to attract more kids to come in and get that one-twenty mark so we can have a section of kindergarten next year. So right now, we're sitting at five sections. Number three is our spring happening at Parkview. There's a list of, a long list of things going on at Parkview. It's very busy this time of year between field trips and game days and assessments and school forests and all those things. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what it's like at Parkview this time of year. It's very active, very fun, very exciting. Kids are all fired up already. You know, there's still seventeen kids who left.
It's quite a list for you.
Yeah, that's a long list of things. Number four, the Parkview land deal. It's near completion. Again, we've talked about this every month for the last four years. We are very, very, very close. I think we're just waiting for signatures now, from what I understand. And I believe it's even on the agenda for you to look at later. Evening. I'm very excited about that and hopefully I'll go through and be able to move forward from that on the Parkview project. Fifth thing on my list is the wetland delineation. It's kind of a complicated. I don't really understand it, but we have the paperwork going. And we're waiting for ARI to help us with the wetland issues to buy up the credits. So once we buy the credits, then we can start on our process of building out on the south side of Parkview. Waiting for that. I decided I'd see the paperwork. It's not the permit, but it's, we're getting closer to the permit as well. That information there. And then the last thing, the Parkview Playground Project. I included the list of would be the construction budget, which came in at one point zero eight five million. I think that was kind of a big number when we signed it, I was a little concerned about it. But luckily, when the bids came in, it came in at six hundred and seventy thousand two hundred dollars. So much lower than we anticipated, which is fantastic. That six hundred and seventy million doesn't include the hundred and forty, hundred and forty thousand for the playground equipment. We've already got that because it's already set aside from the building budget from, you know, three years ago. So the total cost of the project should be about the hundred and ten thousand two hundred dollars. A number I'm very pleased with. And that, of course, gives you the two parking lots. And it actually is three new playgrounds with new surfacing decks. We're going to get rid of the wood chips, the moldy, moldy stuff and all the dirt. We're going to put a rubber surface underneath it, kind of like an artificial turf, grass turf. Much softer, so kids will bounce if they fall on it instead of, you know, crashing. And then we're adding hundred-and-twenty, basically hundred-and-twenty parking spaces. If you've been around Parkview in the evening, afternoon, it's very, very, very crowded. So this will be the area where our student pickup issues and stuff like that. So it's kind of a safety issue as well. And it's also re-scribing the current parking lot to make it more, it's more user-friendly for getting in and out of it.
That would be pretty, it's tough to park a truck in there sometimes.
Yeah, unless you can find one.
You've got two cars, they're in the white line, but you've got to fold the mirrors in sometimes.
So, and then also I included the documentation on the bids, so spare information. I think to get those. That's my presentation in a nutshell. It's about a quarter of a million dollars under the expected walking plan outside. Certainly, there's some money left over to do some other things, or help in some other areas of the projects. If further down the agenda, you have a chance to talk about it. Off we go. Anybody have some questions and have a good answer?
Does that number include the wetland payment?
Yes.
Anybody else?
That's basically that one prescription I'm talking about. Same thing happened with Southside Park? It's really soft.
Yes, I don't know what the Southside Park looks like. It's more of an artificial grass like you see at TFC Stadium or Big Stadium, except it's made softer.
This is what they have, it's more like a running track, but it's a lot softer.
Yeah, I was under the impression it's going to be like a green, like an artificial turf. That's just going to have some extra cushion on the bottom. When it comes time, they'll give us some samples we can choose from.
I think we've all looked at that comment. They have different thicknesses of the grass itself and the pad underneath and some nice stuff.
We don't want to make a juice out of it, we don't want people jumping.
Good luck sliding that. They have to be hard.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. School Board summarization of the Superintendent's Performance Evaluation. Close meeting was held on April eighth to discuss Superintendent Schmidt's performance evaluation. You know, I hope we have really full of statements in that that we were pleased with how it's had sound. And we do have the results of the evaluation, as do you. And I think things are going, I myself, I think things are going well. I think as the evaluation pointed out, the job has been doing well. You've been doing just the human's job. There are some things that, you know, we all think that, you know, you've impressed a lot of people. So, any other comments? Mr. Chair? For some?
I know a whole other district that wishes they owned our superintendent.
Exactly, so.
This is closer than what you're going to get.
So, and you have, Stacy, you have this too. So we will have to sign it after we get done. And then keep it on file, okay? Alrighty, we'll move on. Administration, consider the donation of two books about the country of Chile to the Virginia High School from Twin Medals, Minnesota.
In the beginning of the motion, you accept them as a thank you as well.
Do you have the books?
Yes, they're actually right here, in case the board members would like to take a look at them.
We're going to have all my calendars ready.
Sorry. Is there, there is a motion?
I'm in Yale's side.
Okay, all, any discussion?
Well, I would just like to know that I was, as part of the Rams Board, I was at the Twin Medals. And they did a nice presentation talking about when they went and viewed the mine down in Chile. And talking about that one of our teachers was along on the trip, which I thought was pretty neat. I wasn't aware of that, but Lisa Wexler was along on the trip. And they were thrilled to have her. It was very fascinating to see in the context of what we're on the cusp of, literally tonight. So I just wanted to put that out there to add a little bit of a connection and I think that's pretty neat that they're giving us these books.
That's really nice. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider a five thousand dollar award from Essentia Health to the Virginia High School for the E-Checkup-to-Go Project. I'll make the motion that way, accept the donation. Thank you. Is there a second? Support. Support. Now, this E-Checkup is a substance program designed to motivate individuals to reduce their consumption using personalized information about their own use and risk factors. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we will, we will have letters going to them? Yes, well, Twin Medals, that is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think the Twin Medals one is in that folder right there.
Okay. The next two, consider bus purchase recommendation and consider bus repair estimates and recommendation. I believe we're going to call on Mr. Boss to give a little presentation before we continue on to those next two. Please.
We've been, we've been trying to keep our bus fleet as current as we possibly can. We have one two thousand and ten model bus that could be, should be replaced. I went out and got bids from Clean Transport and from Hoagland Bus of Monticello, Minnesota. And I submitted a recommendation to board for a purchase of a seventy-seven passenger conventional school bus through the cooperative purchase plan in the amount of eighty-one thousand one hundred and two ninety-five.
And that's from Hoagland?
That's from Hoagland, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for eighty-one thousand one hundred and two dollars and ninety-five cents from Hoagland. I have one question.
Yes.
Oh, the school bus is supposed to last. I'm sorry.
The bodies go before the engines do, in most cases, except for, you know, this next thing I'm going to talk to you about.
There's always an exception.
There's always an exception.
There is always an amount.
Typically, ours end up with about a hundred and twenty, nine hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on them. And then the bodies are starting to get old. Just because of the winter.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Seven point four, Mr. Boss again.
Second thing I want to talk to you about was I, I got repair estimates on our bus number eight. It was leaking oil and we took it over to Scubic Brothers in Virginia. And they said that the engine had, is bad. It's got a lot of blow by it. Because of the cost of the engine, I took it down to Manny International in Duluth just for a second opinion on it. And they agreed with Scubics that the engine is bad. I got an estimate from Manny's to repair it. And I got an estimate from Hoagland in Monticello to repair it. It's drivable, we can get it down there. Hoagland was about two thousand dollars cheaper than Manny's to put a new engine in it. Could have gone a couple of different ways. Could have got a short block engine, which is just the basic engine. And then they would have taken the parts off of our current engine and put it on. Only thing is, we run into whatever the integrity of our current engine parts, the labor, the extra labor that goes into it versus buying a engine that is new, rebuilt, all the pieces there, they just plop one out, put one in. I talked to Interstate Detroit Diesel here in town and just wanted to know what their thoughts were on it. And they said, buy the trimmed engine, that's all complete, it's got a better warranty. They just take yours out, put the new one in, and it's done.
That's my body on that bus.
It's good, it's good.
I wouldn't imagine we could, presumably get another five years of it?
I wouldn't think so.
So that's the case, it'd be well worth it.
Yeah.
Might be a lot of things to talk about, really. Is there a motion?
I think motion two, which, still buying the bus?
No, no, we aren't. Consider the bus.
That was appearing.
Twenty-four, no.
I'll make that motion.
Support. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven point five, consider ARI base bid in the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand two hundred dollars for the Parkview Parking Lot and Playground Project. Mr. Beal, would you like to expound upon?
It would be my recommendation to accept the bid. It's a reputable contractor. Their license is insured and have a good reputation, company from this area. We ended up getting a little more than what we were hoping for. They have the synthetic material for the playgrounds. So a great deal of thought and planning has gone into it. I don't see any downsides at all, so.
When is this going to be considered to be done?
Our, our hope is to have.
Everything falls into place.
Our hope is to have it done before the snow flies or before the ground is froze. But we won't know for sure how long it's going to take the Army Corps of Engineers to approve the wetlands credit. And that is the only question mark at this point. So we've graciously asked them to expedite the process. They've been given all the information they need from ARI. And we explained to them what could happen if it was put off another year. The cost will likely go up considerably. We may not be so lucky to get a reputable contractor the next time and so on. But assuming we get that within a reasonable amount of time, we can pass the contractor to put it on the schedule. But until then, we can't.
It's tough to get.
Yeah. But up to this point, I think it's gone about as fast as it could possibly go with the bidding process, the land swaps. So I'm very pleased with the cooperation of the city and the job ARI has done up to this point.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So moved.
Support.
Discussion? With this, I'm just going to ask a question here. Can we get pushed to make this happen faster?
Not until the Army Corps of Engineers is done. If they weren't involved, yes. But since they're involved, no. We've kind of got to wait till they get the green light.
No way you push that along either?
You mean, push it faster? Once, yes, once we have that based upon the contractor, I'm sure they would like to start doing this sooner than later too. But I don't really see anything, Keith, unless you do, I don't really see anything that we could do that would cause this to occur faster.
In fact, once the Army Corps of Engineers put in the request for data, we had it to them within twenty-four hours. And I have drafted a letter, I copied Mike and Noel, asking for the Army Corps of Engineers to kindly expedite the process, what the consequences may be if we don't get the project done this year. I don't really think we can do much more than that, other than just stay on top of it. In a week or so, I can touch bases with them and see how the progress is coming along. It really should be relatively simple for the Army Corps of Engineers. The amount of space that we're talking about is relatively small, the impact is relatively small. All the soil samples have been taken.
Why would it be clustered? How many times has it been surveyed? Twice?
Three, three or four.
Can they find that rate?
I hope so.
I guess I was wondering if you were to push our commissioner to talk to some of our legislators, maybe we could make things happen a little quicker.
Only if they know someone within the Army Corps of Engineers. And it's, it's kind of a little bit of a puzzler because it's really, as Keith said, it's a very, very small chunk. I mean, it can't be more than, what, a quarter of a football field in size or is it?
Less than that probably.
Not even that big?
It's not very wide, not very long. It's a very small sliver of that.
So it, I would think the Army Corps would be able to make their determination relatively quickly.
We would hope so. I mean, after four years of trying to purchase the property to build and demolish before we begin to play around with it.
Good question. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alright, consider the revised job description for the position of Maintenance Secretary.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Support. We didn't have a decision on this. The discussion was just extend the hour a little bit more, consider the three job. It was basically just extend the hour.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider the revised job description for the position of High School Secretary-Register. Are they going to make that? So moved.
Support.
We've fought over this. It was discussed in the same meeting. Basically, what it comes down to is through the summer months, there's no one in that office, it's closed. College starts so much earlier than high school, people were looking for trash trucks, couldn't get them. This position, what was it, one day a month?
One day a week. Yeah, about one day a week.
During the summer. During the summer.
That's going to help alleviate some problems for some of the kids.
And I promise you, Plainer, to the school board that we currently are paying somebody to come in during the summer. So this really isn't any extra money. It's just now officially making it part of the job description for this person.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, we fought over it.
We fought over it, that's right.
You did, yes.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Consider the High School Secretary-Register Posting Proposal.
Oh, this is basically the same thing as what we talked about. It just, it puts this into the actual posting. And so we don't want to post it until you've approved it, you've approved it. So we want to make sure that the posting is. And so we don't want to post it until you've approved it, you've approved it, so we wanna make sure that the posting is relative to the new job description.
Basically whoever visits that job knows they have to.
Yes, and partly honestly, we don't want any confusion of any individual who might be interested in this position, we don't want any confusion, uh, for them as far as what they're, this position, what we want this position to do.
And this will be open?
Yep.
Until by the end of school year?
Um, it depends, we will follow the posting rules.
Okay.
And it could be.
That's why, a- actually I should have asked it that way.
Yes, I believe Lisa, in Lisa Perkovich's perfect world, she would like that to happen, yes.
Okay.
I'll move to approve that.
That's for. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider the land swap agreement between IST seven oh six and the City of Virginia. Is there a motion?
Support.
Discussion?
I've been thinking about this for years.
I know what. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, seven ten, consider the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract for our secondary teacher, Matthew Anderson. Roll call votes.
I'll make a motion that we, uh,
It's roll call.
Don't you have to have a motion?
Right, that's right.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt this resolution.
You have a motion?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Director Sunquist?
Aye.
Director Bearbou?
Aye.
Director Burden?
Aye.
Director Tamrow?
Aye.
Director Anderson? Motion carries. Seven eleven, consider resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract for elementary teacher Samantha Plavider. So moved.
Support.
Oh, yeah, putting Stacy out of the job here.
I don't have to read these?
No, you don't have, no.
As far as the roll call vote.
That's great. You got it here on own.
Uh, Director Sunquist?
Aye.
Director Bearbou?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Tamrow?
Aye.
Director Reardon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven twelve, consider resolution.
Would you want to say that too?
No, you can.
I do say that.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Uh, consider resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract for elementary teacher Sarah DeRenee. So moved.
Support. Director Bear, um, Sunquist?
Aye.
Director Bearbou?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Tamrow?
Aye.
Director Burden?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract for secondary teacher Lisa Sotrim. Sotrim, excuse me. Make a motion.
Support. Director Sunquist?
Aye.
Director Bearbou?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Tamrow?
Aye.
Director Reardon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point one four, consider resolution relating to the termination and re- non-renewal of a teaching contract for elementary teacher Kelly Boss. So moved. Support.
Um, Director Sunquist?
Aye.
Director Bearbou? Um, Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Tamrow?
Aye.
Director Reardon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point one five, five, consider resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract for secondary teacher Larry Zandik. So moved. Support.
Director Sunquist?
Aye.
Director Bearbou?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Tamrow? And Director Reardon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven point one six, hire Matthew Anderson as a point seven FTE, physical education teacher, physical education and health teacher. Lane BA plus twenty, step three for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Home comment regarding the meeting agenda? Any comments about the meeting's agenda this night? Seeing none, we'll continue on to number nine. Meeting announcements, a special meeting is scheduled for Monday, May twentieth, twenty nineteen, at six P M. In the boardroom, Roosevelt, one oh four, so a week from today. Nine point two, working session is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty eighth, at six P M. in the boardroom, Roosevelt, one oh four. And nine point three, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, June tenth, at six P M. in the boardroom, Roosevelt, one oh four. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
How's the board? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.